All right, everyone. It is about 6:30. We're going to get started here. Deputy Clerk Schultzeis, would you read the preamble for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and the ordinance of the city of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the mayor and the City Council of the city of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, April 10th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. In person, in the City Council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmer's Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, and simulcast on Zoom. Acting Mayor Matthew Dolek presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and Astound RCN Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and Astound RCN Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There will be a five-minute time limit for speakers.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would like to call to order the City Council meeting held today, Monday, April 10th, 2023, at 6:31 PM. We are located in the City Council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmer's Road, in Prospect Heights. Madam Clerk, could you conduct a roll call to establish a quorum, please?
Good evening, everyone. Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwiscson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolek?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
Thank you. Could we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the righteous stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. The first item tonight is the approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the March 27th, 2023 City Council regular meeting minutes?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or additions? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolek?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwiscson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Next item is presentations tonight. I see we have a number of people in the crowd this evening, primarily here for the presentation of the Police Volunteer of the Year Award and Unit Citation Awards. So Chief Captain Negro and Deputy Chief Mila Durman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. It's always an exciting time for chiefs to honor those who go above and beyond and, of course, the citizen of the Volunteer of the Year Award.
We'll start with the leader. Yes. Detective Zikis, please step up. Officer Coganese. Sergeant Lang. Detective O'Connor cannot join tonight.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, Accommodation Award is when there's two or more that work together for an outcome, and the outcome, and this is a dangerous gang member being arrested and charged with felonies. Whereas, while it is understood that excellent police work is done routinely by good officers and civilian employees, let it be known that the above-named sergeant, detective, and officer were part of a unit that displayed exceptional teamwork by working together towards successful resolution of a critical incident. Whereas, on July 6th, 2022, Prospect Heights Police Department officers were dispatched to the parking lot of 636 Piper Lane in reference to an armed robbery and aggravated battery. Officer Coganese completed the initial report and learned that a 19-year-old and 32-year-old victim were approached by five offenders, three of which displayed handguns and forcibly took the victim's iPhone and vehicle keys. Furthermore, one of the offenders hit the 19-year-old victim in the face through the vehicle's open window. All five subjects fled the area in a red SUV. Officer Coganese gathered all the information and passed it along to the Prospect Heights Police Department's Investigations Unit and notified Northwest Central Dispatch. Using the Police Department's license plate reader camera in the area, Detective Sergeant Lang and Detective Zikis were able to identify the red SUV as a Toyota RAV4 and confirmed its registration. The Toyota RAV4 was registered to the mother of a well-known maniac Latin disciple gang member, Brian Estrada. Detective Sergeant Lang and Detective Zikis conducted surveillance of the victim's vehicle on July 6th, 2022, approximately 9:35 PM. They observed the same Toyota RAV4 circle the parking lot, drive slowly past the victim's vehicle. Detective Sergeant Lang and Detective Zikis attempted to stop the Toyota. The vehicle fled as they attempted to stop them, but they obeyed our orders. They did not continue to go after them. Very good. Good job. The Toyota RAV4 was later located in Haynesville, Illinois, by the Gray's Lake Police Department. With the direction of Detective Zikis and Sergeant Lang, the vehicle was towed to the Prospect Heights Public Works for further investigation. Detective Sergeant Lang contacted the registered owner of the vehicle and asked her to come to the Police Department. The registered owner came to the PD and was shown a photograph of the driver of the Toyota, which was captured an hour before the armed robbery. The registered owner stated that it was indeed her son, Brian Estrada, driving the vehicle. Detective Zikis prepared a complaint and affidavit for a search warrant for the Toyota RAV4. The Toyota RAV4 was processed for evidence. A report from the Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab confirmed latent prints were recovered from the vehicle. The report confirmed that Brian Estrada's prints were located on three separate locations of the vehicle. Following recorded interviews of the victims and further investigative efforts, Detective Zikis presented the facts of this case to a judge at the Roanoke Metals Courthouse. The judge signed two arrest warrants for Estrada for aggravated battery with a bail amount of $200,000 and armed robbery with a bail amount of $300,000. Over several months in the year 2022 and 2023, Detective Sergeant Lang, Detective Zikis, and Detective O'Connor conducted surveillance on Estrada's residence. On February 9th, 2023, at approximately 19, 20 hours, Detective Sergeant Lang, Detective Zikis, and Detective O'Connor made contact with Estrada outside his residence and ultimately arrested him. Estrada was transported to the station for processing and later turned over to Mount Prospect Police Department for an active warrant out of their time. Therefore, due to these officers' teamwork, training, quick thinking, and professionalism, a dangerous armed gang member was arrested. The individual was charged with armed robbery, aggravated battery, and further charged for pending Mount Prospect. Based on the awards and accommodation program of the Prospect Heights Police Department and because of the officer's professionalism, diligence, and the arrest of a dangerous gang member, I am pleased to present you with the Prospect Heights Police Department's Unit Citation. Let's give him a hand. Congratulations. Good job. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Thanks. Good job. Thank you. If you follow this script, you'll notice that from the initial report to the arrest, it took many hours, it took arrest warrants, affidavit, interviews, surveillance. It's a big deal, so that's why they're being honored. Last but not least, we are going to honor our Police Volunteer of the Year. Angelo, if you would please step up. On behalf of the Prospect Police Department, I'd like to recognize the Police Volunteer of the Year. Angelo Patratos has been with the volunteer program for the last 10 years. He has donated many hours of his personal time and volunteered for many events throughout the year. He has undoubtedly earned the Police Volunteer of the Year. Angelo began the service in Prospect Heights in December 2012. Since then, Angelo has regularly aided the Police Department in special events and takes part in the majority of almost 40 events that the department takes throughout the year. One of our favorites being him dressed up as Santa Claus and putting smiles on the faces of our young residents during holiday events. Angelo demonstrates outstanding efforts in promoting positive community relations through civic, professional, and personal endeavors. Angelo consistently volunteers his time and efforts enhancing the spirit of the community policing, which we greatly appreciate. Your work truly is an example of your dedication to the community. And again, I would like to thank Angelo for all his hard work, hours he's put in during the 2022 year. Thank you, sir. This is made out of real diamonds, isn't it?
Now I know why the budget's worth it.
You won't.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, thank you to all of you and thank you to our officers in attendance and family members. I'm going to give it just a moment here because I think we have a number of people that might be leaving here and then we'll move on. Thank you to all of our staff that represented us here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Angelo.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the Chicago Executive Airport Budget Presentation for
the Fiscal Year 2023/2024, presented by Jason Griffin. And we also have Jeff Miller, the Executive Director, with us tonight. So I'll turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Dolek, Alderman, it's a pleasure to be here. Budget is always fun because it signifies spring, right? That's what they tell me. But no, I just a couple things. I'll let Jason jump right into the presentation, but, you know, two items. We've been able to work with the state to get our projects kind of back online. As you know, the state's had 50% to 60% vacancy rate within their Illinois Department of Aeronautics, so we've been working with them over the last year. So we will have the airfield lighting project actually starting on April 17th, which is great. And then we finally got approval from the FAA for the residential sound insulation program. As you know, we were put on pause as we worked through the process. They finally actually came back, giving us the written confirmation of it being approved. So now we will get the grant hopefully here, programmed around June, and then we will rebid that first, or I should say, second round of sound insulation. So I want to give those two quick updates, hand it off to Jason here, but also extend that I will be behind Jason for questions as they may come. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller, City Council. FY24 budget goals, primarily to maintain financial self-sufficiency for the airport, plan for current and future capital expenses, and then provide the resources to be a premier general aviation airport. The timeline, staff begins planning late 2022 into 2023. It's workshop with the airport board of directors at the, it was a workshop at the February 15th meeting. Out of that workshop, modifications were changed as the budget was updated. The CA Board of Directors discuss and vote on the budget at the meeting on March 15th, and we're here tonight for ultimately your approval. The FY24 budget presented after reserve fund transfers is a net income of $60,580. The FY24 total budget revenues is $6.9 million. That's a 13.98% increase from FY23. The increases are primarily driven by increases to long-term leases. One lease became a land lease, it's now a building lease, so we have a full year of that. Increases to jet A fuel flowage fee, and then other various fee increases. The total budget operating expenses for both the operations and admin department is $5.4 million. That's an increase of $281,000, a 5.45 increase from the FY23 budget. Some of the changes that impact that is a switch to a 40-hour work week, a increase of public relations and marketing expenses, planned insurance expense increases, increases to the US Customs operational expenses, and the airport has put in new securities, which include monthly monitoring fees, so those have led to the increases. Unrestricted net assets available, the airport business per plan requires 25% of budget and operating expenses to be put on reserve. That amount would be $1.3 million in the FY24 budget presented. The projected operating cash balance on April 30th, 2024, is $4.3 million, which is sufficient to cover that debt requirement, or that business plan requirement for reserves. The airport also has a debt covenant for our notes for both the Northeast T-hangers and the US Customs facility. With that, the formula's there, it's 5.45 times 180 divided by 365. That amount comes out of the $2.6 million for the FY24 budget. Again, the $4.3 million that's projected, I have on hand for the operating account at the end of FY24 is sufficient to cover that requirement. Our sewer reserve fund is expected to grow. We have been budgeting for expenses in this. We are undergoing a master drainage study, so we anticipate utilizing this fund more as that study is done. The Vehicle and Equipment Reserve Fund, it's scheduled to start with $1.1 million and then go down to $579,000. That includes the purchase of a new broom. Due to lead times, that broom carries over from last year, so that's the big-ticket item, but we were hit with a 400-day lead time. The Land and Building Reserve Fund is projected to start at $687,000 and finish at $1.4 million. And then the Capital Repair and Demo Fund is also scheduled to continue growing, $457,000 to begin the year and end the year at $552,000. Our major capital A projects, which are major grant projects, are the ARCEB construction, as Executive Director Miller mentioned, the airfield lighting Phase 1, the rehab of the Northwest Quadrant Axus Road, the development of the East Quadrant apron, and the update to the exhibit A property map. Some of these are carryovers from last year due to the staffing levels and funding. They didn't get done in FY23, so they carry over to FY24. And then we turn it over for questions.
All right, thank you, Jason. Does anyone have any questions for either Jason or Jeffrey Miller?
I do. The fuel, can you go back a little bit? The fuel increase?
Yep.
No, the next one, I think. The fuel flowage fee, whatever, is, are you charging your customers that extra fee? How does that work?
So, the fuel flowage fee is paid to us by our fixed base operators on the airport. Any gallon of gas that gets put into their underground tanks, we get 27 cents. Love that. For jet A, 100 low lead is at 19 cents, which is used for the piston aircraft.
Okay. And then what are the other fees, and other fee increases? What?
Commercial operating permit, so if you operate a business on the airport, you have to have a permit with us. That way, we know that you're a licensed business, you have the insurance requirements met. So it's 101 feet base for, say, a detailing company or a maintenance company. If you're chartering a jet aircraft on the airport and where you're based, it's $202 a month.
Is that something they're paying, or?
They pay that to the airport. It's operated, because then they can be listed on our website as one of the charter companies, or maintenance or detailing.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
You had mentioned that the 24 hangar 19 is now a hangar building lease instead of a ground lease?
Correct.
And can you explain the difference?
Would you like to, or?
Yes, absolutely. So as all development at all airports across the country, you don't sell land, right? You lease land, and when you lease land and somebody builds on it, there's always reversionary clauses. So typically, after 40 years, those reversionary clauses kick in, and then the property resorts back to the airport. So at some time, the hangar was built, it was a ground lease at that point, reversionary clause comes in, the building comes back to us, and then we lease the building back at a higher rate per square foot than we would just the undeveloped land. So that's not uncommon. That's how airports work. Actually, it would be illegal for us to sell land and have it have direct access to the airfield as part of the grant assurances with the FAA, it would be under good title. So it's not unheard of, it happens, but it does help. A lot of times, at the end, though, of 40 years, the use of life of the building is always in question, so then you have to take into consideration, can you re-lease the building, or does it make sense to rip the building down and then do something else with the lands? In this case, we could lease the building back out.
And that increases your revenue because you can lease at a higher rate, right?
Correct, absolutely.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yep, go ahead.
Oh, and, you know, you're talking about you have a master drainage study going on. You don't anticipate or you don't know at this time what other work needs to be done for sewer issues or expenses.
Correct. At this point with MWRD, we're, our permits on the south side of the airport, really, we're at capacity when it comes to buildings. So part of what we're doing with the master drainage study is what development can we do on the airport versus how much retention we need to have. Obviously, if we can maximize development versus retention, that's, would be my goal. But you're absolutely right, we do have to wait till the plan's over and then work with developers to see what we need to do in conjunction with development on available land at the airport.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question. Okay, sorry. Okay, so with, you know, the possibility of, you know, the Chicago Bears possibly coming to Arlington Heights, have you got anybody contacting you, you know, possibly with, you know, any dealings with the airport that might hopefully generate a little bit more revenue?
Yeah, I think everybody, yeah, I appreciate this question. I think everybody's still kind of waiting for the actual moment when the deal is signed. But I think the airport obviously will be impacted positively from that. I don't think it's dependent on it, though. We do see a robust response for development at the airport. You know, when you look at airports around Chicago, over the years, a lot of them have started to disappear, right? So where we have the resources that are left, our main competitor is really Midway, and Midway is out of space. So I think regardless of the Bears' decision, we will continue to see it. But every developer we talk to, I think it's still in the back of the mind that once it's actually legitimate and someone says this is happening and kind of move forward, I absolutely think we would be the closest airport. It would be eight miles via the road or six miles EV toll. I just like to take one of those. But I think we do look at toll infrastructure planning, right? Palton Road to the airport. I think all of that can start to work together in unison. So it's exciting. But I don't think we're dependent on it. I think you still see a robust response from people that want to build at the airport regardless of the decision. But hopefully.
Well, you know, they were talking at the aviation convention about the Uber.
Yeah.
Uber, you know, they're working on it.
Yeah.
And if you saw these. That would be really cool.
United Airlines, they're partnering to have a potential EV toll. They're projecting by 2025 from O'Hare to the downtown heliport. So, you know, it's exciting times, exciting time to be a part of it. We see a lot of the youth with the District Two fourteen program as well getting very interested in that side of the aviation business. Because I do firmly believe at the beginning of this, it will be piloted. It won't be autonomous. So, once again, that opens up opportunities for our youth. So it's all really good. And, you know, we hear from the program, they're looking to expand it, double the classroom size next year, which is good as well. I mean, it shows that it's success and that people want to get into this industry. So all good things.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just have one more question. You talked about the construction loan from Northbrook Bank and Trust that was amended and modified for another ten years that will be scheduled to be paid up in May of 2030. What is the interest rate of this loan? Because it was, you said it was originally four point one seven, down to three point two five in May of 2015. Is it?
Currently sits at three point seven five.
It's a three point seven. Is it a fixed rate, or is it?
There's a reevaluation in that year five. So the rate adjusted year five.
Okay, so the just for, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? And related to the Bears, I remember just several years ago when the Cubs were in the World Series against Cleveland, there was a significant increase in air traffic there, in and out, private jets, chargers. Usually at CEA, you don't see jets lined up in a row waiting to take off, and at that time, they were. So that could be an increase if the Bears do finalize things and come here. So if there are no other questions, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we do have an appointment. The, I'm asking for the reappointment of Janet Sayward to the Planning Zoning Board of Appeals. She is not here this evening, but could I start with a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions for Director Peterson regarding her background? She has served on the board for a number of years now, but I'm sure Dan can provide any more information if he cared to, or answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. If you concur, then we'll be very happy to have her back on the board. She is a very valuable asset to the PZBA.
All right. Any questions about her background for Dan? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwigsen?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And next is public comments on agenda matters. Do we have anyone registered? Or does anyone wish to speak this evening?
We have Jim Lorzal, please.
Great. Thank you. If you'd step up and just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Lorzal. I live at twelve twenty-five Center Lane, Prospect Heights. I'm a resident of Prospect Heights, a pilot, a tenant on the airport, and I've been an airport advocate for over thirty years. I do want the airport to succeed. First, I'd like to ask that the resolution twenty-three dash oh six, the airport budget, be removed from the consent agenda so it can be voted on separately and discussed. Second, I'd like to ask you all to not approve the budget as submitted, but amend it to use the unallocated funds from this year to offset the revenue increases of 2024, eliminating the need to increase the rents for everyone on the airport in the coming year. As stated in my email to you, if the airport has a need, it should be in the budget. Just because they can increase rents and fees, even if it's in a lease, does not mean that they should. Everything that the airport has asked for is in the 2024 budget with an increase of slightly over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm asking that the one point six million dollar unallocated surplus from this year be applied to the revenue increases for next year, eliminating the need for any rent increase or fee increase for everyone on the airport, including the FBOs. There would still be seven hundred thousand dollars remaining as a surplus. In the airport's own policy, it's an allowed use of surplus funds. I'm asking that that policy be followed this year. At an airport meeting, Director Lang from Wheeling stated that the airport is a publicly owned entity and should be operated as a not-for-profit. I agree with that principle. Yet the airport appears to have a pattern of unallocated surplus funds. In the previous two years, there's been a surplus of approximately three million dollars. This year, they're on base, they have a one point six million dollar surplus. That's approximately four point six million dollar surplus in three years. On average, that's a twenty-eight percent surplus in each of the three years. So I want to repeat that. That's a twenty-eight percent increase, or I'm sorry, twenty percent unallocated surplus funds in each of the last three years. This is not operating as a publicly owned entity. The idea of applying this year's surplus revenue to next year's budget was not my idea. It's actually the airport's idea. It's in the airport's very own lease rates and charges, specifically Section four point four, point three, point two. Again, I'm asking that this year, the airport be instructed to follow one of its very own policies and apply this year's surplus revenue to the increases called for in the 2024 budget so that no one has to pay more than they need to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Has anyone else registered, or does anyone else wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Hayman? And again, if you would state your name and address for the record, then go ahead, sir.
Your name is eight twenty-two East Old Will Road. Two things. Last Sunday, I had an event that raised five hundred and sixty dollars for Special Service Area Five. All right, I hand you over the check for that.
Thank you, sir.
Second, it was a successful event. Events next month, end of May. Second thing is regarding Special Service Area Five and Special Service Area Eight, there's almost a million dollars worth of money in those two funds to be used for flood flood protection projects such as improving the Willow, repairing and improving the Willow Woods detention ponds, repairing and improving the outdated concept that was Willow Heights front parking lot. I have more to say about that if you guys want to know, but that concept is way gone. We're in 2023. We can do better. River Trails also has flooding issues. The entire area has flooding issues. We need to do more work, and I'd like to see this next council focus on doing some projects there with the money that is already there, with money that I'm raising for in the beginning also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And has anyone else registered, or does anyone else wish to speak on agenda matters? All right, moving on. Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda will include Arbor Day proclamation. Arbor Day is Friday, April twenty eighth, 2023. It also includes a staff memo and ordinance establishing water rates for fiscal year 2023, 24. This is a second reading for that. Staff memo and resolution provided, providing for city council direction and authorization for an inter-fund transfer from a general fund to the capital projects fund. And item D is a memo and resolution approving the fiscal year 2023, 24 budget for the Chicago Executive Airport. Can I start with a motion to approve?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I ask that that resolution for the budget be removed from the consent agenda.
I heard your request. That removal would have to come from the council so they can vote on that or ask for that motion.
Your agenda says.
Joe, am I mistaken?
I think we'll vote to attorneys.
Attorney.
It's under the consent agenda. The council, only the council has the authority to make a motion to remove it.
Okay.
It needs to come from up the dials.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I'm asking for a motion to approve. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
You know what? I'll make a motion to remove it from the consent agenda.
Okay.
We can vote on it separately.
And I'll second that motion.
Yeah.
Okay, then you will remove your motion to approve. So we have a motion to remove item seven D from the consent agenda? So we will put that to the side for right now. Items A, B, and C are still on the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussions? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwigsen?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. That leaves item seven D, which is the memo and resolution approving the fiscal year 2023, 24 budget for Chicago Executive Airport. Shall we open this for discussion? We'll have a measure to, motion to approve.
Correct. It would still need, it would now need a separate motion.
Okay.
Now it's on its own and there's discussion.
Okay, thank you. This item has been separated. So on this item only, item seven D, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and it is now open for discussion. If anyone, I'll turn it over to Alderman Dash, since you requested to remove it. Would you like to open the discussion on this?
Yeah, I mean, I know that I've seen a few emails on the topic, and I guess I'd just like to give the airport an opportunity to respond in this public forum so that refreshes the council as to why this position's been taken and maybe for those people who are watching from home, too.
Thank you for that, Alderman Dash, and thank you for the comments. I think since I've been here, this is year twenty-two for me in aviation, both communities, it's been very apparent that the airport needs to be self-sustaining. As we work towards that goal, there are certain things that we put in place at the airport. Our needs, like all communities, they outweigh, right, what we can actually do. When we look at the rates and charges we have per year, we base that on the Consumer Price Index. So we try to find an avenue there where there's something that we can at least say, this is where we're pulling our increases for that here from, unbiased opinion, if you will, of where the market stands. Right now, we have a waiting list for all of our facilities, paid waiting list. Our community hangars are either a hundred percent to a hundred to forty percent full. I think it depends on the perspective of the individual. I typically don't do permits myself. Last week, I had the pleasure of doing one with a pilot. I won't name the airport they're coming from, but they were over the moon to be at our airport because geographically where we're located, the services we provide, and just the quality of the hangar. While I do sympathize, I am a private pilot myself. There are many needs of the airport, things like ARCEP, where we have to roll our budget forward. Last year, we did nine homes of sound insulation. Thirteen months later, we finally got the one point four million dollars back that we up-fronted for that. So, yeah, we have ten percent that we have to match, but we have to pay a hundred percent upfront. If you look at our capital outlay plan, there are projects that we want to do, we probably won't be able to do, but we want to do them. So when we look at the market, we look at price sensitivity. There are certain things we've put in place. We allow tenants in our T-hangers to split those hangars. A lot of airports don't allow that practice because basically you're cutting the right, the price that they're paying in half depending on the deal they work out with the other individual. If you look at our fuel flowage that Alderman Cameron brought up earlier, we did put in an increase for jet fuel because we do feel like that's appropriate, but we left the fuel flowage free fee for a hundred lowlit, which is a lot of our Piston community fires, obviously, at nineteen cents. So while trying to be sympathetic, I do think there is a reality where we have to say, okay, the airport needs to be self-sustaining. We need to make sure that it's that way. Every community has unallocated funds. If I was Nostradamus, that would be fantastic. I would say this is exactly what we're going to spend this year. But I don't know that. Even look at the state of Illinois. They put one point five billion dollars into a rainy day fund because there are things that happen, things that come up that we have to pay for, equipment breaks. We try to do our best to plan that out, but once again, the needs of the airport, they're extraordinary, and we have to put things in place to make sure that we have revenue to do it. If at such time, we had fees that were way out of whack, that nobody wanted to be at the airport, we would have a huge vacancy rate. But that's not where we are right now. So I think there's things we can do to continue to work with the tenants. But I do firmly believe that this is the right thing to do for your asset, for this community, so we are never a burden to your taxpayers.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, can you, can you respond to the, to the allegation that, you know, if you were to have a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus, that would be sufficient as opposed to the surplus that you're going to have?
No, I absolutely don't think so. I think if you look at our capital outlay, I mean, the things that we're putting in place right now with cash flow, you know, in five years, if we do all the projects that we have in our capital outlay, we're out of money. So that then in turn says, I need to work with our constituents. I was just in Washington, DC, asking for grants. One thing that I've done with Congress, we put together a joint letter. I met with Senator Duckworth directly. I met with Senator Durbin's staff, and I said, can we change the way entitlement dollars are funded towards airports? When you look at airports, right, there's the airport improvement program. Those are user fees that are attached to the whole national airspace system. The airport, like Chicago Executive Airport, is guaranteed a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year in entitlement. Not a lot of money. We've been successful in discretionary funding, but what we're pushing for is to increase that cap from a hundred and fifty thousand to one million a year. So we're having all those conversations to make sure that we can do things like widen runway one, two, three, zero and put things in place to make sure that the airport is operating efficiently. But we're also working with our tenants as well to increase things like land development. Those are the stormwater, stormwater master plan agreement that we have to do for land development. That's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it's not cheap to operate an airport. And I would say kudos to the board of directors and the staff for making sure that your asset is running efficiently and it does have cash reserves on hand.
So you feel that the amount that, the surplus that you, that you have is not sufficient?
Absolutely.
And you don't think it should be reduced at all?
No.
So if there would happen to be a few years where there was an operating shortfall, where is that money recouped from?
Ultimately, if the airport is not self-sufficient, the owning communities are responsible, ultimately. So.
So how, so knowing that our city doesn't generate any revenue from the airport and we don't levy a real estate tax, where would the city find money to assist the airport, our airport, with an operating shortfall? We would not have that money, correct? I mean, we barely have enough money to do, run the city on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, so for me, you know, knowing that we own the airport, we obviously have some liability there, and we don't have excess funds of the city to use towards the airport. I think your professional opinion is, you know, much appreciated. I'm not an airport expert, so. Thank you.
And it's my understanding that we would not have the funds to put into the airport. And I would ask for any opinion from our Director of Finance, if you have any comments on that, if something dire should happen in that respect.
Yeah, you know, we're trying to put money into our capital projects fund to fund the projects for stormwater and things like that. It'd be tough to do that if we had to put money back into the airport. So what he's doing there by taking funds, allocating it, and saving for a rainy day is perfect. So we're not in the hook then in the future for our stuff.
And I'd like to weigh in also, probably from a city administrator's perspective. That's the doomsday scenario. I think it's fair to say Prospect Heights has very limited financial resources. If we were burdened with also supporting the airport, I don't know what we would do because we don't, we don't have the availability. Also, to address, to give you a sense, the airport's very similar to the city of Prospect Heights as far as having to have that twenty percent, or I think in some cases, it's ten percent, matched to garner federal or state grants. And it's ten or twenty percent of a big number. Mr. Hayman mentioned about doing more on the east side, stormwater management. Well, we've leveraged community projects funding from Representative Shakowsky's office. Representative Shakowsky, it's a very competitive process, but our application is for two point four million dollars. We have to come up with eight hundred thousand dollars of it. That pretty much takes a lot, a lot of the city money away. The levy, and that is a great thing, but it's ours now. So if there's damage to, for example, we have a car that drove into it about Labor Day weekend, that's a million dollars worth of damage. That million dollars in reserves suddenly isn't so much. So I, I, I greatly sympathize with the position that the airport's in. Virtually everything we do as a city, if you're doing a sidewalk, Arlington countryside, these aren't, these are multimillion-dollar projects, and to come up with the ten, twenty percent grant is a pretty tough challenge. We've been able to do it. But to also take, take on the liability if the, if the airport has a bad year and can't match revenues to, I don't know what we do.
I mean, I've had, just in the time that I've served on the council, I've had to tell a number of constituents, the answer's no, we can't do that. We don't have the funding. And if I had to tell people within the city or my board that now we were allocating money towards an airport that they would probably never use, I would feel even more disappointed with, with the current situation.
And there are a number of airports that are subsidized on their tax bill, and it's become a political issue. My recollection, I think DuPage, that's on the property tax bill in DuPage County?
DuPage does have a tax. Sorry, I say, general aviation, the majority, if you look, there's thirty-three hundred airports in the National Plan of Engraved Airport Systems, five hundred of which are commercial service. The rest are general aviation. Pretty much all of them are dependent on a general fund. It's mostly what happens. There are airports like Chicago Executive, Teterboro, Van Nuys, Centennial, that are able to make enough money to be self-operating, but we do try to be judicious with those funds. But they do go back into matching grants and making sure that the asset is available for people to use. So I wholeheartedly believe, and like I said, I'm a private pilot myself. I know how expensive this industry is. I understand that. But sometimes I have to take that hat off and I have to put on my airport manager hat. And there are multiple stakeholders we have to listen to. I know for a fact that if you ask our people that complain, our constituents, they'll be the first ones to tell you the fees aren't high enough because they want more sound insulation.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, if you look at our program, we have twenty-eight hundred homes identified. There's a, there's a lot to do there. There's a lot of projects. And at the end of the day, both communities have been very clear with me that we are not to be a burden. And this is kudos to the board for making sure that we're not.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
No, but I know the gentleman who had wanted to, he wanted to respond.
Can you respond?
Actually, I'll let you respond in just a moment. Is that procedurally? Okay. I have one last question, and then, Mr. Lorzal, I'll allow you to respond. Can you perhaps give some clarification as to what business model umbrella, if you will, does the airport fall under? In other words, it's been said, it's a public entity, so it should be a not-for-profit. It's a public airport, but it doesn't mean that anyone just can walk onto the airport. Can you give some clarification to that?
Yeah, it is a public use airport, and it goes back to the grant assurances from the FAA. So when you look at the funds that are put into the airport, we're highly dependent on those federal grants that are derived from user fees over the whole national airspace system. So, you know, when we get like the Airfield Lighting Grant, which is two point seven million, that's a five percent match for us. It's either five or ten percent, depending on how much the state is working with us on that project. But when you look collectively at those fees that are coming into a facility, I would say it's more like an enterprise one. I mean, we are there. We want people to have access. That's our core of our business, right? And that's the FAA's core of it. But at the end of the day, they also say that you should not be a burden on the communities in which you reside. That is something the FAA says as well. So you do have to balance that. I would say the fact that we're not sitting with a huge vacancy rate, as a matter of fact, no vacancy rate, depending on who you talk to when they come in or looking at our facilities, there is a premium. That's the reality of life, and that's based off of where we're located, right? We're located next to a huge metropolitan area, and so it does mean that there is a cost premium to doing business there. But I don't think that's a bad thing necessarily. I think that there's ways that we can work. If you look at the grants that we're taking over the next five years, Congress didn't even know what they were going to do, let alone how would we know with the buy infrastructure law that they passed. That provided roughly about four point eight million dollars to the airport. Now, while we are looking at relocated aircraft in the airfield, part of that is making sure that the Piston community has a location. Once again, I've been doing this twenty-two years. People don't come into the airport to build T-hangers. I've said to many of our tenants, I'd be more than happy to entertain somebody building a row of T-hangers, leasing the ground from us, like we talked about before. We do about a ninety-nine cents a square foot right now, but when you start to look at the economics of it, it doesn't make sense. So that's usually where things like T-hangers fall on the airport to build. So we are putting money into these locations. We're making sure that the type of flying has an existence at this airport, but that's the airport doing it with its funds. So like goes back to, I look at it as an enterprise one, but when you look at the grant funding that we're getting in, I'm not building a ramp for Atlantic with it or Signature or Hawthorne. I'm taking that money and I'm building a location for the tenants to have in the Piston community a spot to park the aircraft. But it is a balancing act again, right? We have to make sure that there's enough funds available to make sure the airport's moving forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lorzal, I'll give you another five-minute. I'll give you another five-minute.
It won't be five minutes.
Oh, that's fine, just go ahead and respond.
You've asked about losses. It's in their policy, just the same as the surplus can be carried over. Their losses are supposed to be carried over and applied to the new budget, the next year's budget, so it would not fall on your communities. Their reserves funds in the budgets are fully funded. They're funded for everything that they've asked for. The money that I'm talking about is above and beyond everything that they've asked for. That's, like I said, if the budget is funded, their reserves are funded. And like I said, the losses are carried over, can be carried over. And it's in their policy. It's nothing that I'm inventing. And like I said, the money I'm talking about is surplus, unallocated. It's been three years that they've had over a million dollars in each year. 28% of their budget every year. I think just that's exorbitant, to have that much of an unallocated funding, reserve, you know, surplus. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Sure.
Why you?
Because I'm.
Why, why should you get a reserve?
I'm asking for everybody on the airport, the FBOs.
No, you're only asking for people that lease something from the airport, right? Somebody who have an agreement with the airport to lease something.
And, and commercial fees, and commercial permits.
Residents and wheeling and prospects, people who do business there. So if we hear that the airport's fully leased, the hangars are fully leased, there's a waiting list for it, the airport does have to live on its own. You know, God help us if anything ever happens where they need money from us, because it won't happen, that'll look like Glenview Phase Two at, at Chicago Executive. I hate to say that, but if, the minute we start having to spend money for that, that's, that's where we would have to go. So, but it's unusual, I think, it's kind of odd to hear a person who's doing business at the airport to say, hey, I want you to take your budget and make it cheaper for me. I get it, you live in towns and you can do that.
But I'm not just talking about me, I'm talking about the FBOs. I'm talking about the transient aircraft.
Right, but these are all people that make business decisions based on the costs and have chose to go forward, and the airport is doing well. And there's no reason in the world that an entity like the airport, with the rules that they have to follow, how they have to treat their owners, and how we're responsible for them, there's no reason for me to ever say you shouldn't have as big a reserve as possible. I wish they had $100 million in reserve, because it's a good thing. That'd be way too big a number, but they can only do things based on the money they have.
According to last year's budget, they had approximately $40,000 surplus in their budget, not in reality. In reality, they had 1.6 million of.
Right, but what, how would they?
He pointed out $60,000 surplus in their budget.
How would the airport be looked at, how would they be looked at if they said, we got a waiting list for hangars, and we're going to decrease the cost of?
I'm not asking to decrease, I'm asking to keep everything the same.
But, but by, the increase that happens, there's still a waiting list. I mean, this stuff is going to find its own equilibrium.
I've been at this airport for 30 years. There's been a waiting list for almost all of those 30 years.
Okay.
Why hasn't it been built 29 years ago, or 30 years ago, or 25 years ago?
All, all the T-hangers are brand-new. I say brand-new, that's when you hear for 25 years, brand-new is relative.
Relatively speaking, I was in the old Concedites.
Okay, and there's none left. I mean, they've all been replaced.
I understand that.
Is there any, is there a question with the quality of the product they give you?
Absolutely not. I'm very satisfied with the management of the airport. The way that the buildings are maintained and the snow is removed, I'm happy with all of that. But I'm going to these meetings, and I'm hearing over 13% over budget and revenue, or 15% over budget and revenue, every year. If there's a need, put it in the budget, and we'll fund it.
But the airport has an obligation to.
Be self-sufficient.
Right, to be self-sufficient, and if they were only 80% leased, I'd be with you. I'd be saying, hey, why don't you shave something off these leases to get these hangars filled?
Now, now you're operating as a profit income business.
They're not operating as a profit income business.
Well.
If you start.
To have $1.6 million surplus at the end of the year is not a not-for-profit business, a public entity. That's a profit business.
They got projects that are two, three, four times that a year.
And they're funded. See, that's, that's my point.
I hear you, I hear you. I don't understand you, but I hear you, I hear what you're saying, but I disagree.
We'll, we'll talk later, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Just that, you know, there are substantial unanticipated potential costs at the airport and they have as well.
And they have reserve funds.
Well, they, they may have reserve funds, but those reserve funds are not that high, so they can't, if there's something that comes up.
They're only over $2 million in reserve.
Well, I mean, but we don't know what, what the unanticipated expenses or projects or problems that have occurred.
And the sun might not come up tomorrow then, too. You don't, you don't know. It's, it's, it's a guess. And if they're going to guess, it should be in the budget. That's my point. But in the last three years.
In a budget where they have to then go to you, and kind of like in arrears, and say, hey, we didn't, we had something come up, now we really have to jack up your rent. I mean, is there?
They probably don't have the ability to jack up the rent.
But why does that have reserves? Things are taken care of in the budget.
Yeah, but things can change quickly. I mean, the city administrator gave an example, I don't know if it was you, Joe, or somebody else, about our levy wall. I mean, a million-dollar damage to a wall that's ours to pay for, we can't budget that. I can't go back now and say, we have to charge $400 for a vehicle sticker.
How much of that was covered by insurance?
None.
Zero.
You can insure.
Okay.
So I, I don't, I don't, I disagree. We can talk after this, but I'll talk to you for four hours.
Over $1.5 million every year of unallocated surplus in a public budget is too much. That's my point.
Well, just one last comment. First of all, thank you for your, your comments. The city of Prospect Heights has reserves, and they are there for a reason. We're not a for-profit organization, we're a government. We still charge for city stickers.
And they've got, they're holding to over $2 million in reserve on a $6 million budget. That's a 30% reserve.
I understand. Thank you again for your comments. Thank you for coming this evening. Are there any other comments or questions for anyone, including the airport staff? There being none, we do have a motion and a second on this issue regarding the airport's budget. Could I have a roll call at this point?
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to old business, item eight. This is a second reading for a liquor license request and ordinance increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses from eight to nine, which is Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Friday and Saturday from 8:00 AM to 3:00 AM, and Sunday from 12:00 noon to 2:00 AM for Barcelado, located at 1421 North Rand Road. We do have the owner here this evening. First, could I have a motion to approve, and then I'll open it up?
So moved, Morgan Adams?
Second, Cameron?
We have a motion and a second. Joe or Director Peterson, did you want to add any clarification to this? Because there might have been some changes.
Sure, maybe just a little bit of background, because Barcelado followed a, a restaurant proposal by Mr. Brizolera, which was for an Asian fusion restaurant. And at that time, it was an A, A license that was authorized by the city for it. So in a sense, the, the new restaurant is, is coming in basically the same place as the predecessor. When, when, and they've done significant investment, but when they started to work both with Karen Schultheis on the liquor side and Dan Peterson on the building side, the plan was to rebrand the restaurant, but essentially it was the same hours and operations. So that, that really hasn't changed. I, I think at the last, last discussion we had of this, it was also noted that when they met with Karen, this, this A license was the one that came closest to their operational plan. And then also, they noted that, like all restaurants, with the, the employment situation, it's very difficult. So you don't, going into this restaurant, you don't really have that capability to what you're maximizing your potential. So I thought that was a good point. Dan, is there anything that you would like to add to that, or?
I think the usage that they've proposed in their restaurant, and what they testified to at the Plan Commission, and that was a higher-end, finer dining-type establishment without video gaming, and that the hours of operation were going to best meet their service needs. And there's other restaurants that they've had in the same general area that have a similar license that are both good dining places, family-oriented, and I think this would fit in and match what they proposed.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? My only comment was that sometimes we have businesses opening that do not use the entire timeframe. If they're, if they have a license till 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, they may not initially be using that entirely. But Prospect Heights is very business-friendly and promoting businesses. If you are successful and expand that, we want those businesses to have that opportunity to explore further hours. So I think that this would be a good match. We always monitor situations, if there are any complaints from the police department, if there are issues there, that, that changes the story. But again, Prospect Heights is very business-oriented, and we like to promote that. So if there are no other questions, we do have the motion and a second. Could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to new business. Item 9A, Staff Memo and Ordnance Amending Title I of the City Code and Adopting the Pay Plan, Compensation of Officers, Employee Salaries and Pay Plan. This is a first reading only, so there's no action, but it is going to be open for discussion. Joe, if you'd like to explain this?
Sure, this is a standard practice. We do this every year. It's a matter of codifying the compensation plan of the city, the positions and salaries, and as you mentioned, it's first reading.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this? All right, then we'll move on to item 9B. Again, this is a first reading only, but this is the first reading of the Staff Memo and Ordnance Adopting the Fiscal Year 2023/24 Budget for the City of Prospect Heights. We've had a couple of long meetings in the past month going over individual department budgets. Does anyone have any comments at this point regarding this? This is a first reading only. If there are none, we will move on. Item 10 is Staff Elected Officials and Commission Reports. We have no formal report scheduled this evening, so I will open it up to any elected officials. Do you have any report to give this evening? Any staff members that wish to give a report? There being none, we will move on to the approval of warrants. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. The total for the expenditures ended up being $198,117.21. We had a wire payment on March 21st, 2023 payroll. That amount was $177,834.89. We also had a March Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund payment in the amount of $17,159.18. And the total warrant amount was $393,111.28 for Council's approval tonight.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Cameron?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or corrections?
Just, so the water fund was $72,864.65. Can someone explain that to me?
Go ahead, sir. That's all right, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think I understand now.
Here, Wendy, you're looking for what we made up that cost of $72,000?
Right.
We had a, the pump for three, three FD mark, what is it, the pump?
The $72, yeah.
Yeah, $39,000 for the pump.
We had multiple costs.
Yeah.
We had multiple expenses on the water department this month. One was the VFD that was approved by budget last year. That got done, that's the controller for the pump number three at the wellhouse. The other expenses were in, March, we had two water main breaks, which cost us, we contracted some of the work out, so there's about $10,000 in expense on that. And then we had a scheduled water hydrant flushing and system check of all of our hydrants done by Emmy Simpson, which was just a little, was budgeted just under $10,000, and it came in just a little bit more. So that was the big bulk of the water expenses for this last month.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Mark. Any other questions on, or comments on the warrants? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Brings us to public comments on non-agenda matters. Has anyone registered, or does anyone wish to speak?
I don't have anyone registered.
Right, there being none, there is no executive session this evening, and so that brings us to adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.